Good morning. Welcome to the 10:00 AM Thursday, March 24th hearing for the Committee of Energy and Environment Protection. We're in conference room 325. My name is Lisa Martin. I'm the base chair and I have with me in the room Chair Nicole Lowen, and that is it at this time. We were just joined by Representative Amy Crusoe. First up on the agenda is HCR 48, HR 43, requesting the Public Utilities Commission to consider efforts to mitigate high-energy burdens for low- and moderate-income customers and investigate how to integrate considerations of energy equity and justice across its work. First up to testify via Zoom is Scott Glenn from the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Hello and good morning Chair Lowen and Vice Chair Martin, members of the committee. The Energy Office submitted testimony with comments that will stand on and available for any questions, noting that this is an important issue, so we're glad you're addressing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dean Nishina from the Division of Consumer Advocacy.
Aloha and good morning Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. This is Dean Nishina with the Division of the Consumer Advocate. You have a written testimony in support, and we'd like to stand on that testimony available for questions if you have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Grace Ralph from the Hawaii Public Utilities Commission.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Grace Ralph testifying on behalf of the Public Utilities Commission. We will stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have Peter Young from Hawaiian Electric Company.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Peter Young on behalf of Hawaiian Electric in support of these resolutions. We will also stand on our testimony.
Thank you very much. And that's all the testifiers we have for Zoom. We also had testimony in support from the Hawaii Office of Community Services and from one individual. Members, are there any questions? Question for the PUC, I think. Grace?
Good morning, yes.
Good morning. So we were having these conversations around equity and there are multiple measures meant to address the issue. But I wanted to note that there is another measure moving this session, 2510 SB 2510, which I think will also impact ratepayers. But I was concerned that you folks didn't weigh in on that, and maybe I could get some analysis as to the impact of that kind of legislation on ratepayers from you.
Thank you for the question. I appreciate that. I am not familiar with that measure, but would be more than happy to provide that analysis and to get back to you on the PUC's position on that.
I very much appreciate that. Thank you. I guess in a similar line of questioning from Asrep Perusso, and maybe for the Consumer Advocate and/or Energy Office in regards to the Senate Bill 2510, I think DCCA testified that the department is concerned that if the generation mix is fixed at any specific level or the amount of contribution from one type of resource, that this may impede the opportunities to find a more cost-effective mix of resources. So I guess I'm just curious, in light of this measure, we're talking about looking at integrating this kind of discussion about equity across the work of the PUC, and that's basically the main thing DCCA is tasked with. So can you elaborate on that? I just don't, I want to make sure we're not doing one thing on one hand and then something opposite.
Sure. If I might. Thank you for the question, Chair. I'm not sure if Mr. Glenn or the PC have additional comments, but if I might start. If I can offer, I view SB 2510 a little differently than what's being proposed in the instant resolution in the sense that 2510 was more of a planning approach and the suggestion that we have, say, fixed amount of firm renewables versus fixed amount of any one particular type of source or one particular source not contributing more than others. I don't really see as an equity issue as much as a planning issue as it relates to how we might best achieve our 100% renewable objectives or targets. And so what we're doing in the resolution here is saying that as we move forward with the 100% resolution, we've seen programs where, you know, it tends to favor those who can afford to participate in those type of programs. And we've seen projects go in, say, in certain communities, and those communities are seeing a lot of these utility-scale projects. So in terms of looking at equity, not only from the standpoint of environmental or geographical equity, but also from an affordability standpoint, that's where we see this resolution being able to really provide us with a focus on ensuring that everybody's benefiting from our climate and renewable goals. So I don't see them as stepping on each other. They're both important considerations still.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess then to be more clear about what I'm asking, I mean, I understand it's just, you know, quote-unquote, "just" the State Planning Act, but that has real impacts also. So if it was actually a mandate to be at a certain percent or have resources fixed at no more than a certain percent. I mean, a worst-case scenario would be where the system would be forced into a situation where, you know, the PUC perhaps felt strong-armed to approve something when there were better options possible. That would be lower cost to ratepayers, and that would be a huge equity issue because, you know, we want to address the equity issues, but we, you know, want to make it not ratepayer subsidized by everyone else as much as possible. We want to have the lowest-cost options on our grid to begin with, to keep things equitable and keep rates low.
Right. No, thank you for that clarification. I think you raised a good point in the sense that if the commission is asked to impose a certain, say, percentage of any type of resource or firm renewables, it would ignore the fact that each island has a different island grid, and, you know, there are different loads, different resources. So, you know, just setting one fixed percentage for firm as well as the type of resource, I think, would handcuff, so to speak, the ongoing process that all parties are going through and trying to find a more optimal path to reach 100% in a more affordable manner. So yeah, that would be, in a way, somewhat contrary to what we're doing, or it might make harder, I should say, the ability to ensure that low-income and vulnerable customers are treated equitably and not left behind in this transition.
Yeah, and like, we want to help low-income customers, but we want to start from a starting point of having, like, you know, as far as it can provide reliability and meet our other goals. We want to have the lowest possible starting point of what rates are in the first place.
Yes.
Into arbitrarily into a situation where rates are higher than they need to be.
Yes, I agree. That's been one of our main points in the sense that we should be trying to keep things affordable first and then, you know, and we can look at other programs that might be necessary to address other issues, but, you know, it is important to try to find an optimal affordable path for all customers.
Does PUC or HSEO want to comment on this at all?
Morning. Thank you for the question.
Grace, I can handle it.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Chair. I think, as you know, we also did not testify on HB 2510 primarily because it did not directly affect the commission. To Dean's point, I think, driving to the core here, you know, any measures that are going to drive up costs of electricity to everyone are certainly going to hit, I think, the folks that we're trying to support with this resolution. So I think that's in agreement with what you're saying, Chair Lowen. And beyond that, I don't really want to discuss the specifics of the approach, the proposal, that bill that much further.
Understood. Okay. And thank you, Chair. Any further questions?
Hearing that, we'll move on to our next measure. HCR 49, HR 44, requesting the Public Utilities Commission in collaboration with Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, Division of Consumer Advocacy to convene a working group to create a Hawaii low-income home energy assistance program to assist low-income households with paying for their home energy. And first up, we have to testify via Zoom, the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Aloha and good morning. The Energy Office stands on its testimony in support and willing to participate and help out a working group. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Dean Nishina, the Division of Consumer Advocacy.
Aloha again. You have a written testimony before you in support, and this reso, as well as the preceding reso, I think, you know, we would really appreciate a favorable consideration of in terms of being able to take real steps to help those vulnerable customers. With that, I'm available for any questions if any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii Public Utilities Commission, Jay Griffin.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Chair members of the committee, we stand on our written testimony supporting the intent, the resolution, and hope to work together with the group here that you're asking us to convene with the Consumer Advocate. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Hawaiian Electric, Joanna Merkel. Go ahead, Joanna. We can't hear you.
Thank you. Sorry for the delay. I was waiting for the button. Good morning Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Martin, and committee members. My name is Joanna Mark. I service as customer endorsement for Hawaiian Electric, and we are in support of HCR 49 and HR 44. As you many know, that the pandemic has really affected many of our customers and their ability to pay, and sources for financial assistance is a struggle. So we'd be happy to serve on the working group as well. I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's all the testifiers that are on Zoom. We have an additional written testimony and support from the Hawaii Office of Community Services and from one individual. Members, are there any questions? Okay, then we're moving on to our next measure, which is HCR 70, HR 63, urging Marine Corps Base Hawaii to upgrade the capacity of its sewage treatment plant and redundancy of the components to ensure that final effluent quality is in compliance with state permitting requirements. And we have nobody signed up to testify orally. We have six individuals testifying in support. Or is there anybody that wished to testify on this measure? Seeing that there is no one to ask questions of, so moving on to our next measure. HCR 46, HR 41, requesting the Hawaii State Energy Office to engage the United States Department of Energy to establish a permanent presence within the state of Hawaii. And we have testimony from first, from Scott Glenn, Hawaii State Energy Office.
Aloha Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Martin, and members of the committee. The Hawaii State Energy Office thanks you for hearing HCR 46, HR 41. This resolution calls on the Hawaii State Energy Office to engage the US Department of Energy on establishing a permanent presence in Hawaii. This is something we support and very much believe will strengthen Hawaii's and the country's leadership on clean energy. As you can see in our testimony and that of other state agencies, we have a long partnership of working with the US DOE that we collectively believe can be strengthened by having the US DOE staff based in Hawaii able to bring their technical expertise and resources to work with state agencies, county agencies, communities, the private sector, our utilities, and others throughout the state, as well as with other federal agencies such as the Department of Defense in order to enhance our national security and clean energy leadership throughout the Pacific. So having the legislature's support for this engagement, I believe, is an important signal to the Department of Energy that we would like to invite them out here for a more permanent, deeper partnership. Thank you for your consideration of this measure.
Thank you very much. And now we have Scott Glenn again, representing DEB.
Aloha Vice Chair Martin. On behalf of Mike McCarty, who couldn't be here today, he wanted to note in his testimony that DEB does support this measure, is willing to support the Energy Office in this engagement, and believes that having the Department of Energy in Hawaii would help transform Hawaii's economy in a way that makes it work better for all of our people to achieve a zero-emission, clean economy, knowledge-based, clean energy economy. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dean Nishina from the Division of Consumer Advocacy.
Aloha again Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Martin, members of the committee. You have a written testimony in support of this resolution, and I'd like to echo both the testimonies offered by Mr. Glenn earlier. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaiian Electric, Darren Ishimura.
Yes, good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Hawaiian Electric will stand on its testimony support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we have HTDC, Len Higashi.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Len Higashi with White Technology Development Corporation. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Look forward to working with State Energy Office and making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have Julie Yankar from Hawaii Gas.
Hi, good morning Vice Chair and members of the committee. Julie Yankar with Hawaii Gas in support of this measure. Just echo the words of Scott Glenn and what the value of the Department of Energy could bring to Hawaii. We urge the committees to pass HCR 46 and HR 41, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
That's all we have on Zoom. In addition, we had written testimony in support from Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority, NELHA, PITCHER, Alexander and Baldwin, and two individuals. Members, are there any questions? Seeing that, we'll move on to our Seeing then, we'll move on to our next measure, which is HCR 47. Uh, HR 42, requesting the Hawaii State Energy Office to convene a working group. To examine issues and barriers to the installation of electric vehicle charging systems in multi-unit dwellings. And make recommendations regarding changes to statutes, rules and other guidance to help clarify and facilitate. The installation of electric vehicle charging systems in those multi-unit dwellings. So we do not have anyone to testify via Zoom for this measure.
I'm sorry, um, Vice Chair Martin, I am here and I did submit um, testimony. I don't know if you received it. Sandy Wong for Tesla.
Okay, um, please, oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I'm I'm looking at the wrong part of my. My paper. I do have testimony on this and I will get to you in a minute, Sandy.
All right.
Testimony. Thank you. Um, so we'll start with Dean Shina from Division of Consumer Advocacy.
Aloha again. Uh, you have a written testimony before you. We appreciate the ten and offering comments on this resolution. Available for questions if you have any. Very much.
Very much. Next, we have Scott Glenn from the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Aloha, the Hawaii State Energy Office supports this measure and would just like to note that we currently have no. Positions that are generally funded to support a transportation specialist. Um, however, we do appreciate that the House included in HB 1600 HD1. A position that if it were adopted, um, would be able to support this working group. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, next we have Kawai Public Utilities Commission, Jay Griffin.
My Vice Chair, yes, we stand on our written testimony, offering comments and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kawai Electric Company, June Chi.
Good morning, Vice Chair Martin, Chair Luan and members of the committee. June Chi, on behalf of Wine Electric Company. Um, Wine Electric has been diligently developing and implementing electric vehicle charging solutions for our customers. Um, and at the end of this year, we'll be launching our charge-ready commercial pilot, which looks specifically at this issue of. Um, charging stations in multi-unit dwellings. So, um, as stated in our written testimony, we are asking for consideration to be included on the proposed working group. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and thank you for your patience. Sandy Wong from Tesla.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Martin, Chair Luan and members of the committee. My name is Sandy Wong. I'm testifying on behalf of Tesla. We are in support of this resolution and we would respectfully ask that we be part of the working group. We think that as a manufacturer of EVs as well as chargers, we bring a unique perspective to the group and so we would ask for that. Um, on a personal note, I would say that, um, you know, I live in a condo. And I would like an EV, but because my condo was built in 1980. Uh, we have no EV charging. So I think we definitely need this measure to pass and we need to do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, that's all the testifiers we have on Zoom. In addition, we had a testimony in support from the Alliance for Automotive Innovation. Climate Protectors Hawaii, Ulu Pono Initiative and one individual. Members, are there any questions? Thanks. Um, maybe for Scott Glenn Energy Office. Um. Just want to look at it whether we have the right list of membership for this committee. I know, assuming you get the positions that you need to be able to. Um, convene this group that larger, large numbers can be unwieldy. So I don't know if you've had the chance to take a look. I know Hawaiian Electric, we know we have a couple of requests and testimony for members to be. Added. It's already at 10. Um, do you think the membership we have on it now is appropriate or? You know, are there any that maybe aren't necessary or we could have one less and then add some additional or what are your thoughts on that?
Thank you, Chair Luan. Um, working groups can be a challenge on their size. And I think the membership we, uh, our initial read of it was that we thought this is a good collection. We do think the utilities have important roles in this conversation.
Yeah.
To the extent you're thinking about including Hawaiian Electric, we would also suggest perhaps including KIC as well. Um, and I know that the legislature and other types of working groups have left it to the discretion of the chair to invite other members as appropriate. Or upon consensus of the working group. So that might be another way, Chair, for. Um, you to address some flexibility with it without having to predetermine um, the exact number and membership of it.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, that's all then. Thanks. Okay. Any other questions? Nope. Okay, then we are moving on. Um, next we have HCR 177 and HR 177, requesting the Public. Utilities Commission to explore through its docket process, the feasibility of relocating above-ground electric transmission lines and distribution lines underground. In the high-risk areas on the island of Maui. And first up to testify, we have Dean Shina from the Division of Consumer Advocacy.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Dean Shina. Again, um, you have our written testimony, offering comments on this particular resolution. I am available for questions if you have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we have Jay Griffin from Hawaii Public Utilities Commissioner.
Hi, Vice Chair. Yes, you uh, will stand on our written testimony, offering comments and available for any questions as well. Thank you.
Um, Scott Glenn from Hawaii State Energy Office.
Vice Chair, we stand on our testimony with written comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then we have in opposition, Hawaiian Electric, Ruin Liu.
Morning, Chair. Um, Chair Luan and Vice Chair Martin, members of the committee. My name is Ruin Liu, um, here for Wine Electric. We stand on our written testimony.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anyone else wishing to testify? Members, any questions? Um, I have a question. Um, you folks, we we heard in the testimony that there's already. Basically a process in place looking at. At basically safety issues and that this could be part of that process and it would be more efficient to include it in that broader process. Are you folks specifically looking at this area on Maui? This is a question for HEPA. As part of that process already.
I can find out if what area, specific area in Maui are you referring to?
Um, it's, I'm not sure. Uh, it's, I can, I can, I can, we can verify offline, but it's, it's um, a windy, I think the tunnel, the saddle of the island.
Okay, I I do know that we are looking at the the county Maui, the Big Island and Honolulu for all these high-risk areas. And in general, coming up with a portfolio of solutions that will address these kind of high-risk areas to um, increase the resiliency. And we are planning to pass this on to the PUC. For their review.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, are there any other questions? All right, we are then moving on to our next measure, which is HCR 52, HR 47. Requesting the governor to endorse the new plastics economy global commitment. And the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development to set targets to fulfill the new plastics economy global commitment. And we have no testimony on this. Well, we had actually, there's one individual in opposition. Um, so moving on. To HCR 60, HR 54, requesting the public utilities to provide a 50% discount rate to retired senior citizens. And on this measure, we have up first Dean Nashina from the Division of Consumer Advocacy.
Aloha again. Um, you have our written testimony before you, offering comments on this particular measure. Uh, I am available for any questions if you have any. Um, thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And next we have also with comments, Jay Griffin from the Hawaii Public Utilities Commission.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll stand on our written testimony, offering comments and available for questions. Thank you.
Very much. And then we have two individuals in support. Members, are there any questions? Seeing then, we will move on to our next measure. Uh, HCR 111 and HR 107, encouraging the city and county of Honolulu to expand and improve services at the YNI convenience center. And we have. We have, let's see, Michael Race, an individual possibly on Zoom. Is Michael Race with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, I've been a lifelong resident of the White Island coast. Uh. And I've been going through the dumps since I was a kid with my grandparents, you know, taking various things. Um, it's honestly, and yeah, in recent years, it has been getting a lot worse. Uh, the lines have been long. There's been a lack of bins to throw, to throw refuse into. Uh, and that road is just horrible. I don't know if anybody ever has ever been on that road, but it. But it's crowded. It can be very hectic, especially if there's elite, if there's cars have been illegally dumped there as well. Uh. That it the dump definitely needs uh, more love, so to speak. Because like a lot of times, like me and my brother, we we consider ourselves responsible. And nurturing like if the dump is just full, we will take our trash home and wait for another day. Unfortunately, most of the time we see people, you know, either bypass dump completely go up White Island Valley Road and then we'll see whatever their load was. On the side of the road up by Butch's Place, uh, the farm up there or somewhere else. And you know, it's it's going to be a very big problem, especially when you consider that they have to drive even further to go dump illegally than it would be for the rest, for the convenience center. I mentioned this in my written testimony, but I would also suggest that in addition to. The improving the the location itself, that the road be improved because it's really only a one-lane road. And especially when there's a lot of people waiting and there's a truck coming in. It it gets very small very quickly and that and the area next to the road is not that good. Or you, the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Um, in addition, we had four other written testimony in support. Members, are there any questions? Seeing then, we will move on to HCR 55. No HR, requesting the Legislative Reference Bureau to update a study on the feasibility of undergrounding the state's utility facilities. Yeah. And we have on Zoom, Scott Glenn from the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Vice Chair Martin, um, the Energy Office submitted comments on this uh, resolution requesting to be one of the consulted parties for the study. Uh, mainly because of our statutory responsibility for energy resilience and energy security. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also had written a testimony from the Legislative Reference Bureau also with comments. And members, any questions? Seeing then, we will move on to. Our next measure. HCR 61, HR 55, urging the Department of Planning and Permitting of the City and County of Honolulu. Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu and the Honolulu City Council to ensure greater public input. Prior to the deconstruction of wind machines having a rated capacity of up to 100 kilowatts. And we have um, with us on Zoom, Scott Glenn from the Hawaii State Energy Office with comments.
Aloha, Vice Chair. Um, we submitted comments on this. Uh, we wanted to uh, make the committee aware. We are engaged with the city. They are looking at. Um, how to increase public awareness and input opportunities relating to land use around renewable energy. Um, this is both through some wind-specific bills as well as an overhaul of their land use ordinance. One of the conversations we've been having with the city is about whether. Kilowatts are the appropriate threshold point for decision-making around public engagement. Just because of the level of technological innovation that happens. And once something gets written into an ordinance, it tends to stay static for several years. Um, so um, we do believe that it's important to increase public opportunity. Uh, we do have a little bit of reservation around setting a particular kilowatt threshold. Um, but I believe we're having really productive conversations with the city on that. Um, and so we just want to provide this perspective to the committee. Thank you.
Um, thank you very much. Um, that is our only live testifier and only testimony. Um, I have a question. What, do you have an alternative unit of, you know, measurement? Threshold that you could recommend to us or not? Or is that something that's still a work in progress?
It's still a work in progress and uh, I think at bottom, the city's preference is to continue to use a kilowatt threshold. And so we're trying to work with them on ways to um, have have a really good, good language around that threshold. Um, I think for the city, what they're really looking to have is a very clear line that they can draw. That's easy to understand for everyone. And so we're we're working with them on that.
Okay, thank you. Members, are there any more questions?
Yep. So for State Energy Office, I'm a little concerned that this is meant to chill uh, an alternative energy source in wind power. Uh, in your opinion, or I guess in your office's opinion, is the public input already required sufficient for these kinds of projects?
That that's an interesting way to phrase the question. Um, there is already public input that can occur for the projects depending on. What permits they need to get, whether they're state permits or city permits. Um, I think in the sense of what the city is looking at doing is they're looking at. Across the board for their conditional use permits, special use permits. Um, those types of permits, at what level should neighborhood boards be engaged? At what level should the planning commission be engaged? And trying to develop some clear threshold points for that. And wind happens to be one of those things along the overall effort that the city is doing.
Okay, and then this resolution asks, the reason I ask is this because this resolution asks for greater public input. I'm wondering if your office's opinion of greater public input is needed or if the public input allowed for now is sufficient.
And. I think it can vary and um, it's not always just the opportunity to to provide. Me, uh, it's not always just making the opportunity to provide input. It's also acting on that input. And so that's, I think, some of the work we also want to do and and work with the city on. So to the extent that there's permits being issued that the public doesn't have the opportunity to weigh in on. Um, I think some of those could improve with permit, um, sorry, with public comment. Uh, but I think that's something that's still being worked out with the city rather than a blanket yes-no response.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Hearing then, we'll move on to our last measure, HR 82, requesting. Um, the Office of Planning, Sustainable Development, Environmental Review Program to form a task force. To recommend user-friendly improvements to the program's website. And we have here on Zoom, Leslie Segundo from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair of, uh, Chair Luan, Chair Vice Chair Martin and members of the committee. The Office of Planning and Sustainable Development stands on its testimony and we've offered also some comments. And I'll be available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, members, are there any questions? No? Okay, um, are there? Are there any further questions? Then we will move on and reassess for decision-making. You are. So, um, we are reconvening the 10:00 AM Thursday, March 24th hearing on the Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection for Decision-Making. First, we have HCR 48, HR 43. And we are going to amend this slightly to include the consumer advocate input to the PUC, acknowledge the work of the PUC and other dockets, including 2019, 0323, because this resolution is not intended to be duplicative, but rather to focus on the need for integration of energy equity and justice in ongoing work of the PUC. So, Vice Chair, please say. For Chair, please say. No, you can call him, Vice Chair. Do you want to see if any discussion? Oh, any discussion? Chair, please say.
All right, we are voting on HCR 48, HR 43, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote a, Rep. Hasham, Rep. Marioshi, Rep. Crusoe, Rep. Todd, Rep. Tokioka, Rep. Matsumoto. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, we have HCR 49, HR 44. And this one, we wanted to add to the working group, a member from VHS Community Services and Department of Labor, from VHS and from Department of Labor Community Services. Office of, Office of Community Services. And members, are there any please take the vote, Chair?
All right, voting on HCR 49, HR 44, recommendation to pass with amendments, noting all members present, are there any noes or reservations? Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And next, we have HCR 70, HR 63. And we will make some amendments to this. To note that the Marine Corps Base is a 10% of the total effluent going into the ocean. That the we will delete that they plan to expand their troops on the island of Oahu. And instead, put in that they were originally constructed, the facility was constructed in 1947 and does not currently include system redundancy. We will also add in that they are the largest water consumer on windward Oahu utilizing fresh potable water to irrigate their landscaping and golf course. And additionally, add in as a resolution that all Department of Defense Installation Services in Hawaii should seek to migrate from R2 to R1 treatment standards, maximizing irrigation, reducing potable water consumption on military bases, and reducing discharge into Hawaii water. Members, is there, are there any no, and Chair, please take the vote.
Voting on HCR 70, HR 63, the recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting all members present, any noes or reservations? If not, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And next, we're doing HCR 46, HR 41. And my recommendation is to pass as is. Members, is there any discussion? Please take the vote, Chair.
Voting on HCR 46, HR 41, recommendation is to pass unamended, noting all members present, any noes or reservations, recommendation adopted.
Next, we have HCR 47, HR 42, noting the testimony from today, and we will be adding HECO and KIC to the working group. And the chair will be able to invite additional members as appropriate. And we will consolidate the members listed as Blue Planet and Hawaii Electric Vehicle Association into a single member representing an NGO group. And we will also delete the individual who sits on the Board of Directors of an Association of Apartment Owners, appointed by Speaker of the House of Representatives. Members, is there any discussion?
Not sure. Quick, quick comment, there will still be a mem, a head of an AAO, it's just, we had two, and we're just trying to narrow the number of members on the group down and leave flexibility for the Chair of the Working Group to appoint other representatives.
Thank you, Chair. Any other comments? And Chair, please take the vote.
All right, HCR 47, HR 42, recommendation to pass with amendments, noting all members present, any noes or reservations? If not, recommendation is adopted.
And thank you. Next, HCR 177, HR 177, we will be deferring this measure because we believe that this is already be, being done in a more holistic way through the current integrated grid plating docket. And HECO Climate Adaptation Transmission and Distribution Resilience Program. Next is HCR 52, HR 47. And I recommend passing this as is. Is there any discussion? If not, Chair, please take the vote.
HCR 57, HR 47, recommendation is to HCR 52, HR 47, not sure what I said before. Recommendation is to pass unamended, noting all members present, any noes or reservations, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, we have HCR 60, HR 54. This measure is seeking to basically energy equity and financial support for low-income residents. And since this measure is regressive, and we did have some other measures hoping to address the same issue, we will leave it up to those other measures to carry out this important work. And next, we have HCR 111 and HR 107. And for this one, I recommend passing as is. Members, any discussion? Seeing then, Chair, can you please take the vote?
Voting on HCR 111 and HR 107, recommendation is to pass unamended, noting all members present, any noes or reservations, seeing then, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And next, we have HCR 55. And again, I recommend passing as is. Is there any discussion? The non-Chair, please take the vote.
All right, voting on HCR 55, HR 61, recommendation is to pass unamended, noting all members present, any noes or reservations? If not, recommendation is adopted.
Next, we have HCR 61, HR 55. And again, I recommend passing as is. Is there any discussion? Non-Chair, please take the vote. Oh, sorry. Recognizing Representative Matsumoto, Matiyashi. Sorry.
We look very similar, so. No, I'll just be voting with reservations. I don't want any kind of chilling effect on, on wind power. And I did not get a clear enough answer from the State Energy Office on whether there was already sufficient input in the process already.
I think this is the reso. This is the one urging the Department of Planning and Permitting to look at wind machines, get public input.
Yep. That's correct.
Did we vote on HCR 55?
Yeah. This is HCR 61, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we did.
All right, sorry, my votes are out of order. Or I'm missing something. Or, because I did defer without missing one. Did you defer HCR 55?
No, I deferred 60.
No, it's just, I
Anyway, just reservations on 61.
What, what's on? Oh, no, no, we don't have to recess, just, can you go and get an extra vote sheet?
Let's repeat, or go on HCR 55 again. This is the one for the LRB study. And looking at undergrounding all the state's utilities. And recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion?
Voting on HCR 55, this is just an HCR. Recommendation is to pass as is.
Yes.
Noting all members present, any noes or reservations? If not, recommendation is adopted. Okay.
Next up, we have HCR 61 and HR 55. And this one, I recommend passing as is. Is there any discussion?
Reservations?
Oh, okay. Yeah, this is the one with the wind machines having a rated capacity of up to 100 kilowatts. Having, yeah. So Chair, please take the vote.
Okay, HCR 61, HR 55, recommendation is to pass unamended, noting reservations about Marioshi, any other noes or reservations? If not, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And next, we have HR 82. And I recommend passing as is. Is there any discussion? Seeing then, Chair, can you please take the vote?
Yes, HR 82, recommendation is to pass unamended, noting all members present, any noes or reservations? If not, recommendation is adopted.
Okay, we are adj.